Okay, so let's do this. We're going to call toward the council meeting of July eighth, twenty twenty five. We stand for the pledge of allegiance. Place your right hand over your heart, ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the physical with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, could you call a roll?
Yes, Mayor. Quorm is present for the City Council Successor Agency and Housing Authority.
Okay, we're going to go on to public comment. Any person wishing to speak on any item on today's agenda may do so at this time for three minutes. Correct. Well, no, no, if it's on the public hearing, all right. So then with hearing, no public comment, we'll go to item one, CSA one and H one.
Want registered?
Receive and file. Now, we're going to do PH one and PH two and have a consolidated public hearing. So could you call those items? Also, Madam Clerk, what's the next scheduled matter?
Yes, Mayor. The next scheduled matter is a public hearing to consider introduction of an ordinance approving zone change number twenty-three dash zero 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 two to allow a zone change of two parcels from MU dash one to M one and a portion of three parcels from M one to MU. Furthermore, Mayor, public hearing considering the introduction of an ordinance approving the zone change number twenty-three dash zero 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 three to allow a zone change of fourteen parcels from M one and R two multiple, excuse me, to MU dash one.
Has the notice of these hearings been given in a time, form and manner as required by law? And do you have the affidavit on file?
Notices for both has been given and an affidavit is on file for both, Mayor.
Have any communications been received?
No communications have been received, Mayor.
Is there a staff report on the matter?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Bernard McCrumby of Planning will be given the staff report.
Welcome, Mr. McCrumby.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'd like to begin by framing today's item with a broader vision that we've already adopted together. On October eighteenth, twenty sixteen, City Council approved the downtown and Fairview Heights transit-oriented development plans, a forward-looking policy framework built to promote walkable, sustainable and a transit-rich Inglewood. The downtown TOD plan covers approximately five hundred and eighty-five acres surrounding the downtown Inglewood Metro Station. It was created with a clear goal, to guide the city's growth in a way that leverages transit investment, reduces car dependence and provides a high-quality-built environment. That vision was backed by a programmatic environmental impact report, which analyzed the build-out of approximately twenty-seven hundred residential units through twenty-thirty-five. It also established mitigation measures addressing traffic, noise, air quality and other environmental concerns. To date, four hundred and three residential units have been developed within the plan area, meaning that there is significant capacity that has been fully studied and cleared. So why is this important? Well, today's zone change proposal are not only consistent with that plan, but they help to fulfill its promise. As part of the application, the council is being asked to approve an addendum to the previously certified EIR. This addendum analyzes two proposed projects and concludes critically that no new environmental impacts would arise beyond what was previously analyzed. It should also be noted that any substantial change in the project that was conceptually analyzed under the EIR addendum would have to go through additional environmental review and clearances. So on June twenty-sixth, Alchemy Planning and Land Use submitted a zone change request on behalf of Donald Goodman or Donnelly Farms. And shortly thereafter, Eric Samick submitted an application, a separate application. Together, these applications propose adjustments to the MU one mixed-use one and M one light manufacturing zones, as well as the R two zoning designations. These changes are not random. They reflect a need to support an existing local business, Donnelly Farms, an opportunity to introduce new housing near high-quality transit and a thoughtful response to community concerns gathered over multiple iterations of the proposed project. The subject sites affected are two hundred through three oh eight East Beach, which is the Donnelly Farm site, and three twenty-six through three thirty-six East Beach and three 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 through three seven five La Colina Drive. Both of these sites fall within the North Station designation of the TOD plan area. The proposed changes will optimize how these parcels serve the city's broader goals. As a part of the zone change request, the City Council must make four findings, the first of which is consistency with the general plan. The MU one designation encourages transit-accessible mixed-use communities. Both sites are adjacent, both sites being adjacent to the Metro K line are ideal for that. Site appropriateness. Site appropriateness. The location and context make these parcels well-suited for both MU one and M one zoning designations. No special privilege. The applicant followed all city standards and process and procedures associated with the zone change request. No detriment to the community. On the contrary, these changes support long-term housing, job retention and urban design goals that were set forth through the TOD and our recently adopted objective design standards. So why is this zone change important? Well, the first reason is that staff is correcting in oversight. Donnelly Farms, a longstanding Inglewood business, was rezoned from M one to MU one during the TOD update, making it legally non-conforming. The proposed zone change would restore the M one zoning designation and allow the business to remain compliant and expand operations to include new dry and cold storage, as well as improving parking and traffic circulation. The zone change will also continue to advance TOD goals. The rezoning adjacent, by rezoning the adjacent parcels to MU one will allow for conceptual mixed-use development featuring twenty-one, twenty-four townhomes at the Donnelly Farm site and a hundred and fifteen, and a one hundred and fifteen-unit, five-story apartment building with ten affordable units at the Beach and La Colina site. This dual-purpose zoning, zone change will foster job creation, housing growth and essentially do exactly what the TOD envisioned. The Donnelly Farm site and some of the conceptual benefits include a five-foot dedication along Beach Avenue that will help to reduce traffic congestion on Beach and also expand off-street parking. Expand warehouse, expand the warehouse and reduce truck trips from its location in Los Angeles. Improve parking from twenty currently what is twenty onsite parking spaces to a total of seventy-nine, which will further reduce street traffic. And add twenty-four new workforce townhome, townhome units, helping to meet the city's housing goals and support walkable neighborhoods. Some of the conceptual project benefits for the Beach and La Colina site include also a five-foot dedication on both Beach and La Colina. The five-story residential development will include ten affordable units, underground parking of sixty-nine, which is roughly half a space per unit. Should also note that state provisions preclude the city from enforcing any residential parking requirement, so their ability to provide these onsite parking standards actually go above and beyond what their, their ability to do currently. Ingress and egress will be from Beach only. Previous iterations of that project showed that access to the, to the subject site would be from La Colina. And so we, we heard the community and we've removed the ingress and egress from La Colina. The La Colina site or access to La Colina will only be for vehicular emergency access only. Street parking and other logistical concerns on La Colina will be reviewed through site plan review and the design review stage of this project in conjunction with public works should this zone change request move forward. And lastly, the site topography allows for a stepped design that minimizes height impacts on La Colina, as depicted on the screen, to minimize the development impact for the adjacent residential uses. So as we, we move closer to the, the end of this presentation, I want to address a few of the community concerns. Over the past few years, staff and the applicant have listened and heard from the residents and adapted a purposeful and adapted the project in purposeful and meaningful ways. One thing that needs to be noted is that when the TOD plan was adopted in twenty sixteen, it happened prior to the adoption of some of the state housing mandates that came forward after in twenty nineteen, such as SB three thirty, SB thirty-five, AB twenty-eleven, SB six, all of which were designed to help streamline the production of, of housing and tied to city's hands by making a lot of, a lot of residential developments by right. This applicant's zone change request allows the city to maintain some level of local control that has been lost with the adoption of some of these state streamlining provisions. If approved, the applicant would have to come back to or would have to return to the Planning Commission for a design review approval, which would allow the community the opportunity to see what is being proposed. And it also limits the applicant's opportunity to what we would like to call bait and switch the design and what's being proposed by way of the zone change approval. The city is also going to take the extra step of noticing staff should the zone change move forward, noticing the community of the design review application when it's going before the Planning Commission so that they would have the opportunity, although it's a non-public hearing, to be heard by the decision-making body at that time. Extensive feedback has been gathered from both the public arena and informally over multiple years, and the project that we've presented conceptually is, was birthed from the, a response to the community's comments and input. The building, the building height was another concern that we heard from the constituency. And while the site allows with the zone change would allow up to nine, would allow up to nine stories, the applicant is proposing on one site, two-story townhomes on the Donnelly Farm site and on the Beach and La Colina site, five stories, visible as three to four stories with setbacks to reduce the impacts on the neighbors. Another concern and a big one was traffic. The project provides a hundred and fifty new parking spaces and that's combined through, through both developments. With the development of dry and cold storage areas on the Donnelly Farm site, vehicle truck traffics, traffic daily will be reduced significantly. Ingress and egress will be limited to Beach and not La Colina. Wider, wider community benefits include existing legal non-conforming properties now being brought into performance with the zone change from M one to MU one, expanded job opportunities through the industrial use expansion, new housing of, including affordable units and improved traffic flow, street design by way of the five-foot dedication that's going to be required on both Beach and La Colina. As mentioned previously, the environmental analysis confirms that this project is fully compliant with CEQA and no new impacts would be created. This concludes staff's presentation, and I'm available to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
We're going to go to public comment at this point. If anybody has any comments on DR one and DR two.
PH, Mayor.
Oh, excuse me, PH, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. It's your time. Go right back to that microphone.
Testing?
We got you.
Hi, I'm Craig Sprecker. I've lived on La Colina Drive thirty-four years and I've had recent issues with the planning department that just seemed to fall on deaf ears and nothing was really thought about it, just they'd approved it. And then I've also, I've communicated with the planning department and had a bunch of issues with the existing design. And, you know, first of all, it said that, I think there was one iteration on this project and that not all the concerns were addressed. Part of the problem is the, the misrepresent, represents the size of the building. The section that we saw is actually the center. They kind of cherry picked the lowest portion of the, the structure. If you, if you, there's nothing, no section on the east, which is much taller and it's, you know, they, they also misrepresented the existing structures next to the, to the new building. They, they shrunk the size of them and moved them to the far side of the lot. This was all brought up before, years ago, and it never got changed. So it continues to misrepresent the actual impact. Likewise, the twenty, thirty thousand gallon tank of corrosive ferrous chloride adjacent is not showing the plans. They, they omitted that. It's just typical misrepresentation. Also, they talk about widening the street, but there's three structures that are going to remain, and currently there's no sidewalk. It's, it's one foot to the curb. So that's not really addressed anywhere. It's going to, it's going to go wide and then bottleneck and then wide again. That, that's, that needs to be addressed. The other thing I brought up that wasn't addressed, the Olympics twenty twenty-eight, typically they'll, they'll ban all truck deliveries during the day. So, so that puts it at night and then they're building fifteen feet away from existing homes in the middle of the night or something because I don't know how that works. That needs to be thought out. And also the, the lack of congestion on Beach, it's very narrow. If one truck double parks for delivery, it closes the street, unlike other streets that are much wider and appropriate for large apartment complexes. The, this is very inappropriate. Also, the new Donnelly entrance dumps on that four-way intersection right in the middle of it. So you've got trucks that, that, that corner gets congested already. And here, here they, they're adding a truck, the main entrance to Don Lee right at that very same intersection. So I, I think there's a lot of issues that need to be addressed. And I, how many times about up? So thanks for your time. I'm sure there's more people that want to get up and talk.
Thank you. You, you guys, we're, we're going to hold applause till the end.
I don't, is this on? I don't think it is.
Yes, it is on.
Okay. Are we talking about both projects or?
Yes.
The Don Lee? Okay. So everybody seems to approve the Don Lee project. He owns the property. It, it seems reasonable. It was commercial. What, what he plans to do, lots of parking. The problem is going to be the other project at, I don't know, the one on Beach, three three eight Beach. And it, it's, it's, it's not going to have enough parking. Apparently, the TOD mixed-use development standards that in the city plan, page twenty-five, says one space per residential dwelling, they're going to only have fifty-nine for a hundred and sixteen units. And, and actually, Don Lee's going to have a lot more parking, but it's going to be canceled out by the lack of parking at that one. Also, it, it seems like this, this was kind of rushed through. You saw the presentation, they're mixed together. Also, the zoning was changed on everybody's residential property without any, talking to anybody about it, without any public, you know, we found out at the planning meeting that they're doing that and, and, and I asked the planner to explain, he still didn't, to me, why they did that. I think I heard something about consistency. It's an MU, it's a mixed-use planning, which means it's the Wild West, anything goes. It's going to be, all those properties can become anything you want. And it's kind of a, it's not consistent, it's anything goes wild, wild west. Also, the street is erroneously called forty feet wide, and my wife and I went out and measured across the street. By the way, I'm three-two-one East Beach, I'm right across the street from this. And it's thirty-five feet wide, maybe in one part towards Sentinela Park, it's forty feet, but right there where it curves and all that, it's, it's thirty-five feet. It used to be that they only allowed parking on one side of the street, then it kind of worked, but now there's parking on both sides. And anytime a semi, two semis are coming down, one has to back up. It's crazy. And we're, we're kind of concerned about if there's ever an emergency there. Also, it looked like they did the traffic stuff ten years ago, before there was a train. I looked at the report, it's gobs of pages and there's maybe a paragraph on traffic. It was done one day in February, doesn't have the name of the person that did it, doesn't say what day of the week, and it grades the traffic at different locations. I don't think that was done properly. You know, I think that lot needs development. Something needs to happen there. I'm talking about the one on Beach. And I just think they kind of rushed through this and threw it in with the Don Lee project. And I think that maybe we need to go slower with it and, and make sure we did all the right things to, so it's, it's done properly. I don't, I think it's being rushed and, and I think it might come back to bite us in the ass later. And so I just hope that maybe you guys can tap the brakes on this and we can have more debate about it, more discussions and kind of come up with something that might work better there. I think condos, townhouses, something else. This is a big unit there for a tiny little street and another street.
Sir, where at?
Oh, okay. And another street doesn't have an outline.
Thank you.
I'm Bishop Garrett. I live on, I live on La Colina Drive. And Craig, this gentleman here just spoke just before. One of the problems that I think we face is I don't even get any notifications about this. This two o'clock meeting, I would not have known about the two o'clock meeting had it not been for Craig. And that seemed like it's, it's being deceptive and not giving the residents opportunity to come here. Two o'clock meeting, most of the people.
Sir, every meeting is at two o'clock.
Well, I didn't know that. I'm sorry to tell you that.
For at least seven years?
Well, whether it is or not, I still need some notification on what they're going to do about La Colina.
We have, we have a website and anything that's going to be on the agenda, you can go to www.cityofinglewood.org and look at our website and, all right?
Well, I stand corrected on that.
All right.
Now, my concern is the amount of traffic that's going to end, end generating on La Colina Drive and also Beach. There are over one hundred cars that are parked on that street from Don Lee's company, and it's always that way, Monday through Friday, except Saturdays and Sundays. And so my concern is, are we going to end up having more of a problem of getting in and out? They said egress and regress is going to be on Beach, but people don't tend to do that when they have to do something that they need to get someplace. They'll come up the alley and go down La Colina. And so I'm just concerned, how are we going to, how's that going to affect the neighbors in the community?
Thank you, sir. Are there any other requests to speak? With that, we'll close public comment. Councilman Padilla, did you want to make a motion?
I'd like to make a couple of comments before we do, before we vote. And look, I appreciate folks that came in to let your voice be heard. And, you know, the gentleman said, hey, we need to tap the brakes on this. Well, folks, we tapped the brakes on this years ago. If you recall, we pulled this off, right? The owners pulled it off themselves to tap the brakes. And as you say, something needs to be built. You're right. Something needs to be built on both locations. I can recall getting stopped up there when I would drive by La Colina, meeting with a few of the residents, receiving phone calls about, let's just say, La Colina project with trespassers. We got an overabundance of trespassers. We have encampments. We have fires that have been built, illegal dumping, trash, right? Something, build something here, do something, Councilman. We're, we need to have something built here. And even back then, we heard you and we tapped the brakes. And now we're back. And now we're looking at a project and you're looking at the folks that own these two sites that are going to develop them. And they're folks that have been in this community for years, that have owned businesses and properties here, folks that are trustworthy, folks that when they give you their word, it's their bond, old school. Donnelly Farm, for example, in our community since nineteen eighty-four. And what they're looking to build is to be able to transition the properties they already own to have housing for their employees as well, so they don't have to travel far to get to work and provide more onsite parking. You look at the housing that's going to be provided on La Colina, and we heard you, residents, we heard you about, you can't let them come on La Colina, it's going to be too crowded, it's too narrow. The change has been made to come in and out on Beach. We heard you. When you look at the environmental impact reports that have been done, to look at traffic congestion, to take a look at all the different things that involve a development like both of these involve, you look at the CEQA standards to make sure that we met everything and that everything is in compliance. We've done our due diligence. When residents in the area were concerned about what was happening, let's say on La Colina, I could remember meeting with some of you residents and giving you the phone number of the property managers that are running that property, so you can call them also direct. Nobody was shying away. We were being responsible as a city and the property owners were being responsible as property owners. This is not a, anything goes wild, wild west. Folks are allowed to use their own interpretations. I get it. You know, I, I use the analogy of, I can give you a chocolate ice cream and you're going to say, I wanted vanilla. I give you vanilla, you're going to say, I wanted sprinkles, right? This is something that we have been working on for years.
Alex, I don't like sprinkles.
Exactly my point. So we have worked on this, these projects for years. We've done our due diligence. We've heard the residents' concerns. We've heard the business owners' concerns along Beach as well. We have looked at, what is the best use of these sites so that they will improve and be conforming to the new Inglewood, an Inglewood that has evolved, an Inglewood that is a city of champions, the gem of the South Bay. And how do we continue to do that? Is by bringing responsible development into our communities. And people say, yeah, but then they can do anything they want. No, they're still. No, there's still site appropriateness, there's still design review, there's still work that is gonna be looked at. And I can tell you that our planning folks are taking this to heart, because we know we get one bite at the apple. It's the same thing that we had to deal with when we did the, the foreign development, SOFI into a dome, and other developments here in Inglewood. We take it to heart. We're not just, you know, trying, like somebody said overnight, this was not overnight. So I can just tell you that this is something that we have worked for many years on. We did pause it, we did put the brakes on it, and now we're back. And so I think that what's being proposed and the work that has been done, and thank you, Bernard, your presentation was on point.
Long, but on point.
It was on point. And I especially wanna thank you, the residents, that came out to voice your concerns. I've met with many of you, I know several of you, I've talked to Donald Goodman, to Eric, to voice your concerns, so they're here. They're not an invisible person that lives in the ma- you know, up in the mountains somewhere. They're here, and they care about Inglewood as much as we do. Thank you.
Councilman Morales.
Thank you, I just, uh, wanna take the time to, first of all, commend Councilman Padilla, who's been working on these, uh, plans for a while. Why? Because when he basically came into the council, he was already immediately dealing with it. They say that, th- there's no way this has not been discussed over and over. The first time I discussed it with folks was sixteen years ago. I walked the site with some of the, the folks that are here. And I'll tell you, you know, uh, then we, we, we had some milestones where, you know, the, the first proposal would have allowed, you know, I think it was a hundred and eighty-five to two hundred units, now we're down to one fifteen. A lot of work has been done here, and everything has been listened to. A couple of things have happened, we as a city have created the, the TLD zone, the, the Transit Oriented District. I, I don't recall exactly what, uh, day, what year that happened, but this is what is envisioned when you create these zones. Housing itself has changed in the state of California, the requirements have changed. Long are the days that people buy a site and build a single-family home unless it's for themselves. So the housing has kind of evolved, and we're addressing our housing needs. That's what we're given the right to create, the Transit Oriented Districts, which limits the, the certain requirements. So everything is happening as it's supposed to in terms of, of what's happening here. To be honest, that particular site, I believe, is, is a historic site here for the, for the city of Inglewood. Not established as one, but folks feel, uh, uh, kind of aligned to it. Um, and they should, they've been here for a very long time, they love the city of Inglewood just as we do, but, and change is difficult. What you want is for folks that are creating the change to care about Inglewood as well. Uh, I can tell you that both of these gentlemen, but most especially, uh, uh, Don Lee, uh, Don Goodman from Don Lee Farms, I mean, somebody who has been here during the very tough years of the city of Inglewood, I, I'm sure he could have left if he wanted to. Uh, many times was the top employer of the city, uh, is growing, creating good jobs, taking care of his employees, I mean, these are things that matter. These are things that you look at folks and when they care about the city, they have interest in it, they're not gonna make moves that bring their own value down. So this plan is what was meant to be, this is how we've evolved into this plan. Nobody dove into this plan. Again, wanna commend Councilman Padilla, because I know what he walked into the first year he came here. And that had to calm down, and it was almost like start over. So, you know, uh, the site plan review is there in place for a reason. That's where you're gonna discuss all of the things that are kind of pointed towards your concerns. Uh, Mr. McCrumby, uh, uh, laid it out, we look forward to that. But as far as I'm concerned, it's been probably fifteen, sixteen years since my first conversation about this site. So, you know, congratulations.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Is speaking.
Yes, please.
Thank you. Uh, thank you very much. Uh, thank you, everyone, for being here. Um, my comments really has to do with the process. And, uh, what I've heard is the history of this project, and when you have a project in your district, and this is in my colleague's district, and you hear that Councilman Padilla has been involved with this project, met with residents, been dealing with, with it for a number of years. He really needs to be commended, because I really do believe that it's important that we as elected officials engage with our community when it's a big project or any issue. And just hearing the history and hearing the passion when Councilman Padilla talks about this just makes me feel good about the fact that he is here to represent his constituents. I know there have been some issues that, uh, certainly the community has, and I believe that the city has addressed them, and certainly along, uh, in partnership with the councilperson. I wanna commend Bernard, because it was a great presentation. It did lay out specifically some of the things that I have heard from different, uh, uh, folks in the community through, uh, the councilman here. And so you can see that it's, the city is working in partnership with everyone here and with the councilperson, because this is in his district. And just to, uh, reiterate the fact that the passion, the commitment, the dedication of your councilperson along with city staff, and I think, obviously, there's some comments here today, I think it will be a wonderful project. And so I just wanna commend the councilperson and the staff for what they have done, uh, long-term for this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to-
Well, I'd like to say one thing.
Yeah.
One thing.
Go, go.
Uh, y- you know, I've been around the city since nineteen seventy-two. That area, uh, along Beach, has been undeveloped from the time I was a motor cop. And, uh, all developers are not created equal. A lot of people will come into the city because Inglewood's the hot place, and, and they'll just wanna stick a project here. Mr. Benjamin has been here for the long haul. He has personal investment, and I, I wanted to note that. And so with that, is there a motion to move two and three on PH one?
I make a motion to move two and three.
Second. Madam City Clerk.
Councilmembers Gray-
Aye.
Padilla-
Aye.
Morales-
Aye.
Fogg-
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye, I'll introduce, is there a motion to, uh, move PH two, two and three?
So moved.
A motion.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Councilmembers Gray-
Aye.
Padilla-
Aye.
Morales-
Aye.
Fogg-
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye, did you wanna-
Introduce.
Alright, with that, we move on to the consent calendar, items two through seven.
No move.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Councilmembers Gray- Padilla-
Aye.
Morales-
Aye.
Fogg-
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye. Uh, moving to DR one.
Yes, Mayor, staff report recommending the mayor and councilmembers adopt a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign, deliver, and execute an amendment to the funding agreement with the Los Angeles County Metropolitan Transportation Authority related to the city's Inglewood Transit Connector program.
Move adoption.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Councilmembers Gray-
Aye.
Padilla-
Aye.
Morales-
Aye.
Fogg-
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye, DR two.
Staff report recommending the mayor and councilmembers adopt a resolutions to take the following actions. One, approve the execution of amendment number one to agreement number twenty-three dash two-two-four with California Department of Transportation related to city's Inglewood Transit Connector project to reflect the phased approach to implementing the ITC project, specify appropriate uses for the funds supporting ITC program components, and m- memorialize that the encumbrance and expenditure requirements outlined in the funding agreement have been satisfied. And two, authorize the mayor to execute amendment number one to the funding agreement on behalf of the city.
Move item one.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Councilmembers Gray-
Aye.
Padilla-
Aye.
Morales-
Aye.
Fogg-
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye. We'll move on to A one, report on closed session items.
Uh, Mayor, can I, can I clarify something?
Sure.
In regards to the DR two. When I said move item one, it was move adoption of the resolution one, which is numbered one. I just wanted to clarify that.
So he's moving the adoption.
So that's, just to make it clear-
Yes, sir, yes, sir, got you, councilman.
A one.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. Uh, the records reflect that the city council recessed into closed session, all members being present with the exception of Councilmember Gray to discuss items CS one and CS two. With respect to item CS one, the city council received an outstanding report from Jose Cortez. Feedback was provided, but no final action was taken. With respect to item CS two, the city council approved a post-judgment collection agreement and promissory note for payment of more than two-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand dollars in monetary sanctions imposed against Melanie McDade and her counsel for their year-long pattern of discovery and misconduct violations of court orders in Ms. McDade's lawsuit against the city of Inglewood and Ma- Mayor James T. Butts. Ms. McDade was terminated by the city in twenty-nineteen after an investigation revealed evidence of serious misconduct. In a March fifth, twenty-twenty-five sanctions order, the court found that Ms. McDade committed perjury and destroyed critical evidence contradicting her allegations against the city and Mayor Butts. Among sweeping evidentiary sanctions, McDade is prohibited from introducing evidence related to any of her allegations. The court imposed two-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand, four-hundred-and-four dollars in monetary sanctions against Ms. McDade and her attorneys at Martin and Martin LLP, David Martin, Janet Arisa, and Renee Rubin. Mr. Martin publicly vowed to appeal the decision, while Ms. McDade continued to vigorously pursue her claims. But in a complete about-face, Ms. McDade and her counsel have now dismissed their appeal of the court's order, and Martin and Martin LLP has agreed to pay the monetary sanctions in full. Today, the city council accepted an initial payment of nearly forty-five-thousand dollars from Martin and Martin LLC to the city of Inglewood. They will continue to make monthly payments with ten percent interest to the city for two years, resulting in a total payment of nearly two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars. Ms. McDade's attorney at Martin and Martin have also withdrawn as her counsel in the lawsuit. This concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you. A two.
Nothing. Thank you, Mayor.
CM one.
No reports, Mayor.
CC one.
Yes, Mayor, really quickly, um, today I attended the funeral services for a long-term resident of District One, Jeanette Johnson. She lived off of Fifth Avenue, and so, Mayor, if you'd be so kind to please, she was also a church member of mine, uh, if you would close in, in the honor of Jeanette Johnson, uh, the family, and of course, myself would, would just so be thankful for that. And then lastly, um, hats off to our councilwoman, Dionne Fogg. I mean, what an amazing event you put on, uh, this past weekend. I didn't wanna go home, it was off the chain. Uh, you know, you, you outdid yourself. I mean, people were sitting beyond the basketball courts, and so, you know, just, just take it all in stride and know that what you're doing is not in vain, and that it's just an awesome thing that you're doing for our community. And thank you to our mayor and council for also seeing the vision and allowing this to come forth. I mean, Pancho Sanchez was there, and Councilman Padilla and I was rocking back there, so, I mean, I had a good time on Saturday. Thank you, and to Thomas U-Hall and your entire staff over at the park. I mean, what can I say? I, I said it yesterday in, in our executive staff, but to say it publicly to, so everyone could hear, that your staff is very kind, I saw them help people when they needed help. And so I thank you for allowing, you know, for having that, for grooming your staff to be, to, to be helpful to our community, and so I'm thankful. I stood back and I just watched, I didn't say nothing, I just watched. And the people that were there handling the, the, um, the counter, the registration booths were top-notch with great customer service, so thank you so much. Mayor, that concludes my remarks.
Thank you. Uh, the housing authority's in session, and we're moving on. Uh, Madam City Clerk, what's the next scheduled matter in H two?
Yes, sir. Uh, the next scheduled matter, Mayor, is a staff report rec- chairman, excuse me, is a staff report recommending that the chairman and housing authority members adopt a resolution adopting an updated administrative plan for the HCV program incorporating updates related to the housing opportunities through Modernization Act and other permissible amendments.
Move adoption.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Okay. Uh, count, excuse me, uh, housing authority members, Gray-
Aye.
Padilla-
Aye.
Morales-
Aye.
Fogg-
Aye.
Chairman Butts.
Aye. Uh, Madam City Clerk, what's the next scheduled matter?
Mayor, the next, chairman, the next scheduled matter is a public hearing to consider the Inglewood Housing Authority one-year agency plan annual plan.
Has the, um, notice of this hearing been given in the time form and manners required by law?
Uh, yes, Mayor, notice has been given, and an affidavit is on file.
Have any communications been received on the matter?
No communications have been received, Mayor.
Is there a brief staff report on the matter?
There is, it should be brief. Uh, Roberto Chavez will be giving the staff report.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Housing Authority members and members of the public. I have prepared a very brief presentation- to go over the-
Take your time.
Annual agency plan. Um, I'll go through it. Uh, so the, today, we're here for the public hearing to consider the Housing Authority's twenty-twenty-five annual agency plan as part of the twenty-twenty through twenty-twenty-five five-year annual agency plan. Go on to the next slide, the purpose. So required by HUD for continued Section Eight funding since nineteen ninety-eight. Go over the five-year plan, describes the missions, long-range goals, and objectives. The annual plan, immediate needs, and strategies and operations. Next slide. Uh, the contents of the agency plan, uh, describe the mission to promote adequate and affordable housing, economic opportunity, and suitable living free from discrimination. Some of the highlights of the specific program goals is to apply for additional special-purpose vouchers, maintain the high performer status, implement the streamlining measures granted by the Housing Opportunity Through Modernization Act of twenty-twenty, twenty-sixteen, also referred to as HATMA. Utilize the authority to preserve affordable housing through the project-based voucher program. Expand housing opportunity through opening the Section Eight waiting list. Perform quality control inspections to verify that families are living in decent, safe, and sanitary housing units. Monitor the Housing Choice Voucher Program, also known as Section Eight Payment Standards, to assure that low-income households are not overly rent-cost burden. New activity, some of the new activity includes the application and receipt of Foster Youth Initiative vouchers, twenty-five were awarded, Veterans Affair Supportive Housing, also known as VASH program. Uh, what, the Housing Authority was awarded thirty-five vouchers, project-based voucher awards. The Housing Authority awarded sixty project-based vouchers to four-hundred Centinela Avenue and thirty project-based vouchers to three-oh-four East Spruce Avenue. These developments are in, uh, certain stages of development and have not yet been completed. The implementation of the small-area fair market rents, also called SAFMR provision, implementation of the mandatory provisions under the HATMA, which we described earlier. Um, in terms of inspections, the transition from the Housing Quality Standards Platform to the National Standards for Physical Inspections of Real Estate, which is called INSPIRE. Annual Agency Plan Preparation, developed using the CDBG Consolidated Plan, the Section Eight Administrative Plan, the waiting list, and participant data. Um, next, we go to the agency plan with shared with the Resident Advisory Board, referred to as the RAB. The agency plan has been on public display for forty-five days. With that comes the recommendation to conduct the public hearing, to conduct that, to consider the annual agency plan of twenty-twenty-five, approve the annual agency plan, and authorize the chairman to sign the resolution and execute the required certification forms for submission to the Department of Housing and Urban Development, and that includes a resolution. Um, with that, I'm available for any questions, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, is there any comment from the public? Hearing no comment from the public, is there a motion to move- Move adoption, Mayor.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Housing Authority members, Gray-
Aye.
Padilla-
Aye.
Morales-
Aye.
Fogg-
Aye.
Chairman Butts.
Aye, with that, we'll adjourn the Housing Authority. There are no appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. Public comment regarding any other matter consec- connected with city business not elsewhere considered on the agenda may do so at this time for one minute. Hearing no public comment, move the mayor and council remarks. And everybody bear in mind, it's been a long day. Councilwoman Gray.
My, my comments are brief, always brief. Uh, first, let me start off-
Mine are long, man.
Oh, okay. Let me start off- Let me start off by wishing my granddaughter a happy birthday, Amaya Ecto Jones. She turned 18 today, so I would like to wish her a happy birthday. Just graduated from high school. Thank you. I'd like to ask the mayor to adjourn the meeting in memory of Willie Brown. Mr. Brown passed away on, I believe, June 25th. Many of you know him. He was the publisher of Inglewood Today newspaper. He started it in 1993, 32 years ago. Willie was a great friend, very loyal. He loved Inglewood. He really focused on publishing positive things about Inglewood. He saw it for 32 years. He saw a lot of changes. He saw where it is now, and he was very proud of the city. The last time I think most people saw him was when he was the master of ceremony at my swearing-in ceremony, when it became a council person. But he will be missed by many, many people in this city. So, may he rest in peace. Condolences to his family and all who loved him. So, please adjourn the meeting in his memory, Mayor. Thank you.
I will do so. Councilman Padilla.
Can I finish?
I thought you were done. I thought you were done.
No, I have a few more items. Thank you. I want to congratulate Councilwoman Dionne Falk. I wasn't able to attend the event, but I heard it was off the chain. And I saw a few pictures, and I know it was extremely well-attended. I heard the music was great, the food, the camaraderie, everything. I think this is your third or fourth year. I don't remember, but it gets better and better and better. So, congratulations to you and everyone involved. Thomas, our parks and recs director, he's always there helping us. But I heard it was a great event. And then, I also want to remind you, this Thursday, July 10th, I'm having a community meeting at the ICOP Center. Please come. I'll have your questions. Mr. Louis Adwell, our city manager, will bring its team to talk about updating issues in D one and to answer questions. So, please come. 5:30 this Thursday, July 10th, and everyone is invited, and the council and mayor. Also, want to remind you, July 26th is our annual family unity day. That will be our second year, and it's really important this year because we really want to celebrate our diversity, our communities, our unity, everything about this city that makes it great. I mean, people, the people here make it great. Of course, our leaders here, the mayor and the council, have done wonders in terms of making this the best city, I believe, and certainly LA County or California. So, please come out July 26th, our second annual family unity day. Lastly, on July, on June 26th, Thursday, I attended the Day of Sports at Darby Park with LA 28 Olympics. They gave donations to the kids. It was a wonderful event because it was summer camp there. And I don't know if there's the pictures of the kids in the background, but it was a wonderful event. So, thanks to LA 28 and everyone that was involved in it. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Padilla.
Thank you, Mayor. And I just want to touch on a couple of things. Number one, Willie Brown, his soul rests in peace. And I can tell you a quick story. When I was running to get elected, we were sitting right there on that, like, that table. And the gentleman walked up to me and said, "You will never be elected to this council. There's no way we're going to elect another Mexican to stand on, to be on the other side of Mayor Butts." Told me that.
So, what happened? So, what happened?
How'd that work out?
Exactly. But I'm saying that because Willie Brown jumped up and was ready to go fist to cuff with that guy because that's the type of person Willie Brown was. He cared about people. He cared about Inglewood, right? And so, man, I'll tell you, man, when he did that, and I really didn't know him, it showed a lot about his character. Showed a lot about the person that he is, and he's always been that way. And so, you know, I got to tell you, I know a couple of years ago, he lost his wife during COVID. Devastating. Man, I felt so bad. I mean, he was just really, you know, I mean, as you can imagine. But you know what? He never lost hope. He never lost faith. And so, may his soul rest in eternal peace. Love you, Willie. Now, let's talk about the Jazz Festival. Dionne, you and your team did an amazing job, standing-room-only crowd. The vendors that were out there, amazing, from, I mean, so much stuff out there from businesses throughout the city of Inglewood and the surrounding community. Because people realize when we do things in Inglewood, we impact our surrounding communities, and they were all out there in force. And, I mean, the entertainment, oh my goodness. I mean, Delphonic's, right? Pancho Sanchez. I mean, it was just off the charts, and Tierra was out there. So, again, I want to thank you. And I know she's going to thank her crew, but there's somebody on her crew that I really want, man, this guy was working it. He was working it. Shannon, her husband. And I remember going to Shannon and saying, "Shannon, you got to enjoy this." He goes, "No, I'm like Stella is for you." He says, "When you're at an event, right? Stella's the one that's running the show, right?" And Shannon, man, he totally represented. A couple of folks came to him, including myself, about a question Johnny on the spot. So, Shannon, kudos to you too, my brother. And so, now, I want to talk about my upcoming Chili Cook-Off and District Two picnic. It's coming in eight weeks, on August 16th. The reason I bring it up is folks say, "Hey, man, I would have entered your Chili Cook-Off if I'd have known." Well, we have a couple of spots available. If you're interested in being in the Chili Cook-Off, the event starts at 4:00 PM, please call Ramon at my office, 310-412-8601, and that's if you're interested in being one of the participants in the Chili Cook-Off. We'd appreciate it. Like I said, we have right now two openings. I got to tell you, on Saturday, too, you know, everybody from outside of Inglewood, we had elected officials from LA City, LA County, talking about how they heard all these fireworks in their cities. And I said, "You should have came to Inglewood. It was so quiet. We banned fireworks. We had none." I was telling folks, I slept like a puppy, right? Because, you know, we had banners up saying fireworks were illegal and banned, and everybody did their part. Man, I was saying, "Man, it's too bad you weren't in the beautiful city of Inglewood." Because that noise never came in Inglewood, right? It was so quiet. What? What?
It wasn't in here.
Alex, kill it.
I know. It was loud on this floor.
Okay.
We have a chance.
All right.
Okay, all right. We did it for you.
But those fireworks, enough said. All right. Now, I would like to say real quick, Mayor, I had a family friend of mine, his mom turned 98 years old. There she is, Lucy Sipos, man. Congratulations on your 98th birthday. Melvin and I have been friends since kindergarten. When I got on the police department, he joined the police department, was one of our reserve officers. We got to patrol together, and his mom is, I mean, she's out there every day cleaning the streets, making sure everybody's safe. So, Mrs. Sipos, happy birthday. Thank you.
Councilwoman Falk, District Four, the party planner.
Thanks, Mayor. I want to start off by also giving my condolences to the family of Willie Brown. I didn't get a chance to get to know him that well, but he seemed like a very lovely man, and I know that he was a pillar in the community. And he published the Inglewood Today newspaper, which has been around for many, many years. So, my condolences to the family. He will be missed. Also, I want to quickly acknowledge that Costco, right here on Century Boulevard, celebrated. Me and the mayor were actually there, it was really early this morning at 8:00 AM. We were there, and we helped Costco celebrate their 40th anniversary. And so, we were there about 8:00 AM, and there's many, many employees that open up Costco every morning, and so, just happy to be there and celebrate with them. And they had a ribbon-cutting ceremony this morning, so, thank you. And so, I'm going to just, first of all, just really quickly thank everybody on this day, as for all the support in making the music festival come to life. It was just an amazing event, but it was a lot of work to get there. So, and it is done by the help of everybody here on this day. And so, I do want to thank, especially thank, first of all, my councilmember here, Aloy Morales. Love you, man. Alex Padilla, love you, man. Mayor Butts, love you. And my sister over here, city clerk. I also want to thank our wonderful city manager, who, and also Thomas U-Hall, Director of Parks and Recs. Without you guys, it wouldn't have happened, period. So, from the bottom of my heart, love y'all, okay? My assistant, Malcolm Patton, I had him running around. And also, I want to thank my husband, Shannon Falk. He did an amazing job, and I am blessed. You have Stella. I have Shannon. And so, God is good. Thank you for bringing Shannon into my life. I also want to give a big shout-out to Adele Mar from KJLH. I thought she did an amazing job on Saturday, and just very blessed to have her partnership on this event. And as well as our assembly member, Tina McKinner, who is coming on as a strong partner with the city of Inglewood going forward. She loves this event, wants to continue to keep that alive. And also, I want to thank our production team, Chuck Dennis, Victoria Entertainment, Mogo Behavior, and Harold Long, It's Your Party. They all came together and helped put that wonderful event together. We were successful in raising over $3,500 for the Ingle Unified School District, for the travel for our band to go to Washington, DC. And I was hoping that we could have raised a little bit more, but I will be much more intentional about raising more money for them. Hopefully, you'll give me another couple of minutes, Mayor.
No, not a couple of minutes.
One.
Two or three.
One, okay. I want to thank also SoFi Stadium, who was nice enough to allow all of our residents to park there and be able to accommodate the music festival. And then, all of our vendors and all of our wonderful artists, they've already been mentioned, but it was a wonderful event as far as having just top-of-the-line talent, Daz Band, Pancho Sanchez, Diata, Yo-Yo, Delphonic Experience, just a really wonderful opportunity and blessed to have them in Inglewood again. And I want to thank our volunteers for coming out and helping to make sure that everything went very smoothly. So, I think with that said, I just, again, want to thank everybody here on this day. I cannot put together an event like this without the support of my team, my dream team. You know who you are. You know who you are. So, thank you all so much, and I'm hopeful and looking forward to doing it again next year. So, thank y'all. Love y'all.
Okay. Councilman Morales.
First, you know, congratulations, Dionne. I mean, that was, that was an awesome event. What it was, was, you know, I know we call it a jazz festival. There wasn't much jazz, but it was, it became a music festival. And, you know, I know your vision was, was what it became that day, which was something so full, you know, and it just was a nice environment. Folks were just out there, just, they brought their own beach chairs. They kind of laid out on the, on the grass and heard some quality music and just, you know, enjoyed the day. That was about building community, really kind of symbolized what we have become, you know, being able to kind of develop that kind of celebration, camaraderie, the day, kind of just celebrating the city and allowing ourselves to use some of those resources. And you took us there because it wasn't easy to get that kind of investment going because we're still getting used to our success, and that was part of it. So, congratulations for that.
Thank you.
And then, you know, Thomas U-Hall and his staff, you know, we always say good things about him when, when these things happen, but, man, I mean, they have got to be tired every time we do those events. They're the first ones there, starting with the guys who set up 6:00 AM. They're there. There's like 15 of them setting everything up. Then, you know, the staff that's there all day, they put up with us showing up. They make sure everything is set. I mean, amazing, Thomas, amazing to keep motivated, and thank you. Thank you for that, and obviously, you show up on Monday, too. So, you know, that's, that's awesome. And then, you know, Willie Brown. I loved Willie Brown. I mean, this was a kind of a person who, who was part of Inglewood. You know, he goes back, he's, he's part of the group that I call, you know, the old Inglewood, old-school Inglewood. Because he was here when I was growing up, he was here when Mayor Ed Vincent was here, and we used to get this thing in the mail in Inglewood, it was like a trifold. I think it was called the Inglewood View. I don't think there's anybody here in the room that remembers that, but we, Jim does. But we used to get this thing, it was called the Inglewood View when I was a kid, and we'd get it in the mail, and it would tell kind of what was going on in the city, little things about the park, this and that. Then, it became the Inglewood Today magazine for a while, and he took it over and started to really kind of promote the city. That, that turned into kind of really describing everything that was going on in the city, and with it, the transition of the Latino community coming in and all of this new kind of cultural impact. He came, he came around, he was trying to look for a person to talk about all of the new community that was being developed. He ended up hiring my brother. My brother was 16 years old, became his first writer for the Latino community, did probably a year and a half with him on the weekly articles. Then, he got another gentleman who worked a little more full-time on those articles. And so, it goes, I mentioned that story because I want to point out, you know, what Alex talked about, about Willie, because that truly was who he was. I mean, you can, everybody had his thing with Willie, you know, whenever you have a 30-year relationship, you go at it every once in a while. And, and, you know, he's no exception, but that's because we respected each other. He said what he wanted to say, but equally, he, his paper was like himself. It was who he was. And, you know, when, when you have a family, you, you, you don't talk bad about your family. You don't, you don't, you say the good things about your family, and that's what he did. That's what he did. He pointed out the good things about Inglewood with his paper. That was his voice. That was what he did. He was helping us. That was his, his input, his way of doing it. And I appreciate him. I had plenty of conversations where we spoke just truthfully with each other, and, and, you know, just someone that shared a lot of his history that he went through to get to where he was. And here's, you know, when you get to that, that era, the folks that are from that generation, their history is amazing. So, we were fortunate to have him here in the city of Inglewood. He will be missed, and, you know, with it, he left us the Inglewood today. So, rest in peace, Willie.
Okay. Little housekeeping. Mr. City Attorney, the CS two involved us entering to an agreement with Martin and Martin to allow that payment plan. So, it occurred to me that we would need a vote to execute that agreement.
Yes, a vote, a vote in open session as well. Thank you.
Okay. So, for CS two, is there a motion to approve?
So, moved. Second?
Madam City Clerk.
Councilmembers, Gray.
I was not in closed session, so I'm abstaining.
Yes, ma'am.
And it's, okay, yeah.
Councilmember Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye. And I want to, I don't want any pictures because they all covered everything. I do want to say that Councilwoman Falk's event was reminiscent of Woodstock. It was very, very mellow, a lot of
It was very, very mellow, a lot of people, and you did a great job, Councilwoman, great job. And I'm a bah humbug kind of guy, and I was very impressed. And Costco, which used to be the Price Club, celebrated 40 years, and Willie Brown, known him since 1999, he was a strong proponent of the city, just a good guy, and we're going to miss him. And with that, we're going to close in the name of Jeanette Johnson and Willie Brown, and we adjourn.